Brenda, will you just let somebody sign up? I don't think they have.
My house is on the road.
If I had to move.
I was on the road.
It's very bright.
You don't shoot. That's okay. We're right down the road.
And I went out to face this and someone was talking about it.
I've read a lot of it.
And it was their fault. Was that it's so dark? You can't really see.
My transport.
Yeah, and having trouble understanding people.
What's any transport?
That is me, they're from here.
I'll try to spare it.
Never.
I'll not see you if you're over that.
Y'all ready to get started?
I'll write this in. I'll just say this.
Thank you. All right, guys, six oh one, we'll call the meeting in order. We have a core on present, all present except for. He said he'll join us here in a little bit, but we'll just chime in when he gets here. We'll start the pledge allegiance from the invitation. Pledge allegiance.
This is applying. To the citizens of America. To the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, every nation of its own.
Father God, thank you for allowing us to join tonight. Father, just thank you for this beautiful weather. Father, just be with each and every one of us tonight. Let's make the best decisions for the citizens of Bartlett. Father, just try to keep us on task and get to this meeting as swiftly as possible, but get the business needed at hand, needed done. In your name we pray, amen. Uh, no one signed up for citizens communication? Boards, commissions, committees, presentations, proclamations? Hear yea, hear yea. Item number one, recognition of Mayor Pro Temp. Philip Weaver for his service on the city council. Today is Philip's last of, well, I guess if we have to any meetings between now and the May thirteenth, or you know, it won't be your last meeting, but you know, but we don't see that happening.
I hope not.
So, uh, Mr. Weaver, uh, Mr. Weaver gave two good years, uh, two probably felt like they were very long years to the citizens of Bartlett, and, uh, we certainly appreciate your service here, buddy. We couldn't have done a lot of things without you. Uh, I myself for sure appreciate everything that you've helped me with and, and, uh, have this city grow as a community and all you've done, I mean, it's a lot of hands-on, a lot of hands-on, Mr. Weaver's done. Pretty much the entire renovation of City Hall was all at his, his hands and his leadership, so. He's been a heck of a, a heck of a council member, heck of a citizen, making a whopping ten dollars a month to put up with it.
Well, by the way, I got another one coming, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it should be at the end of the month. Man. But no, Philip, we, we love you, man, we appreciate you. I know you just stepped it down at the end of the street if we need you. You know, I'll be calling you for advice. Um, Mr. Weaver is a, he's a, he's a plumbing and sewer magician that can really help, help us a lot with that.
Swim pool guy.
I'm sorry?
Swim pool guy.
Swim pool man, yeah, he did a lot of swim pools too, so. He's, he's, we've done a lot together in the little short period of two years, so. We, uh, I, I appreciate you, man, and, uh, we, we, we do hate to see you go, but we, we know you want to spend some time with the lovely wife. And, uh, give it a little bit of more traveling.
She's green of us, no bother.
And we appreciate you letting us have Philip for two years. And, and, uh, we do, seriously do. I know that hasn't always easy and, uh, some of these meetings get a little time consuming and long-winded and kind of like I am right now. But, uh, man, I'm gonna miss you, buddy, and then, but I'll be calling you, so let's get, let's get you this little, uh, what do we want to do this? Athlete.
Y'all want to do this back, Paul?
We started doing these a couple of years ago when, uh, Joseph was here, and we just liked to carry it on. I mean, outgoing members, I feel like you've given a lot of time and blood and sweat and tears to the citizens of Bartlett, so at least we can give you something to use as a fishing weight out at the lake or something, I don't know. Whatever you want to do, hanging on the wall or something in your office, I don't know, but we appreciate you, buddy. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else got anything they want to say to Mr. Weaver? Council, y'all got anything you want to say to Weaver? Mara, Brenda? And his replacement is sitting right here, so let's wear her in next month. Technically, we haven't had the election yet, so. All right, so. Sorry. Things must be backing up at work. Workshop agenda, review, discuss and provide direction. Item number two, presentation, discussion, direction on a regional code compliance officer.
Mayor and council, this item for you today. I had the, I don't know if she's the administrator or what her title is over with Rogers and slash Little River. So they're looking to do some kind of MOU or an interlocal, essentially. They're looking to hire a, a code enforcement officer, and the thought process is essentially getting some kind of a coalition of cities that maybe want to use this code enforcement officer, so then we'd have some cost sharing and, and the salary. I believe that there's rosebuds looking to possibly join, and I think that they were going to bring this to Holland as well. And so just wanted to kind of open the floor to see if there's something, if this is something the council would be interested in. Right now, we've got the chief and Swaki doing code enforcement for us, and they're doing a heck of a job. But at the end of the day, we're, they're hired to be police officers, and so if this was something where we wanted to stretch our dollars, still get a, an excellent level of service, um, this, I think this would be a really great opportunity for the city to, I mean, there'd be a lot that'd have to go into the agreement, right, to make sure that the city gets what it needs to make sure that code enforcement is being done, but just wanted to bring it forward to you before we, if this is something that y'all want us to kind of look into and get a new, some kind of discussion with these cities on.
How would, how would that be divided monetarily and where would the office have that? Who would dispatch, some of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so right now, again, this is kind of in the early talks, but from what Rogers slash Little River has said, they'd be the ones that hire. And then Rosebud, I guess, has said that if they come in, they'd be able to provide a vehicle. We also have a vehicle, so then there'd be some kind of discount given to us, right? If we've also provided a vehicle that they can use because there'd be some either reimbursement slash, yeah, some kind of form of payment to the city or a reduction in what we pay to provide that as well. So this is something that would have to get discussed in negotiations with the cities, but kind of at the, they want to know first and foremost what cities want to go in, if, and, and you know.
They're looking to hire this one person to do this for all them, or is it like they could get overwhelmed pretty quick?
Yeah, and I think right now they're looking to do one, but I would recommend two. And, and that's where I think that it'd be, whether or not these other cities could essentially put up extra money. But in my mind, you're essentially paying for two, but not even really paying for a full one, uh, when it comes down to the brass tacks of it.
I think it's a great idea of just working out the details of it.
Yeah.
So we purchased a vehicle, then we use that vehicle to go to the other towns too?
Mm-hmm, and that's where the cost reimbursement comes back to us in some kind of, just based on the, the, the loss of the asset, right, in being used, mileage, what, all the maintenance that has to go into it being used. But then it'd be essentially, we'd have a vehicle, and then Rosebud would have a vehicle.
We need to check on them driving, the liabilities of them driving our vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only concern on that would be insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Insurance.
And we, we need to remove our sound.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing that we could look at, and then from a logistical standpoint, one thing to discuss, but one, kind of where my, my mind is essentially is, you know, there'd be designated days for each city, so. Every Monday or Tuesday, whatever it may be, they're in Bartlett, or they're in Little, uh, Little River, they're in Rogers, they're in Rosebud, they're in Holland, wherever they, whichever cities participate, they'd have designated days. And I think the first year would certainly be the toughest, because there's a lot where you need to get code essentially into.
Caught up.
Caught up, but then from an annual standpoint, I think it'd be a little bit easier because then you'd have.
Have they hired somebody yet or what?
They're, they're looking through this first before they hire.
It's almost like it, and I'm just thinking here, it might be easier to control if there was a, if you created kind of an entity like an acronym, I wonder if that would look like as a code compliant officer for those others. I mean, the city would fund that, that we could manage that, uh, the budget could be managed on to where.
Yeah.
Fuel, everything comes out of that budget instead of having to reimburse back and forth accounts.
Yeah.
Or they want to handle it. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's something that we could talk about whenever, we could re, re-bring in our attorney and say, you know, here's what we're looking to do. What are the, is there some kind of third party that we need to create? I know that they do this with like water districts, um.
Kind of a co-op kind of thing.
Yeah, of a, of a sort, so that'd be something that we could certainly look into with them.
I just think that would be easier than that. If you don't have a police officer for it.
Yeah, you'd likely like to have a city representative on some kind of board, right, where these folks would report to, but, and then as, if it, if it's successful, right, they can start doing it with other positions too.
Yeah, from a liability standpoint, I think you almost have to do that, uh, have each city represented, represented in that board.
Mm-hmm.
That way, it's not getting one-sided, you know, your roles over here in Bartlett five days a week, and nobody else is getting it.
We could use him five days a week, I promise you.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was hoping, is how busy is enforcement?
Right now, it's very busy.
Yes.
I, I mean, as an example today, I know we did a red tag, and we're working, that property owner came in and we're working with them now to get an RV off their lot. They have some stakes in the art usement, they're removing those, and then they've, they're working on getting in compliance with our permit process. And there, there's plenty others, we've got another one where we're gonna have to do a fence removal. Well, we won't, we will be asking the property owner, because it's on another person's property. But I think the chief, in the last two to three weeks, probably sent out forty-eight or fifty code violation letters. And that's only going to start increasing with grass and whatnot.
The iceberg.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't take long, you just got one block there, huh?
Yeah, well, and I think that's part of the reason why the cleanup event was so successful. I mean, we were.
Sent out a bunch of letters before now.
We did.
Yep.
And we provided the flyer.
I talked to chief about this, and he is on board with it.
Is he?
He's, he's supportive of it. Obviously, he's got probably the same questions we have.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
I think it's a great idea to use the logistics part down.
Yeah.
I agree.
Agreed.
Well, we can coordinate with them and start talking through it, figuring out what those pieces are. Yeah.
Maybe you'd do some good to have that, maybe have council jot those questions down, send them to Mara and myself, or, or Mara, let Mara coordinate with these other cities, maybe the mayors and the, and administrations of these cities come together, have a joint meeting, do discussions.
Start hashing it out.
Throw it all out on the table, but, you know, this is what my council's asking, you know, and just make sure that these are covered. The same thing for Little River, Holland, Rogers, and we all get on the same page. It's gonna be a little couple of months process, I imagine, but.
Yeah, it's kind of taking on what Sheldon was saying, for the liability sources, you might need to create that co-op so that that can stand alone without gentrifying any of the city's vehicles or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I'd almost see it as each city needs to have a, a vehicle at their city, and this person travels to that city in their personal vehicle, and they get reimbursed mileage for that, and then they get in the city vehicle and tour around the city, do this, the tour, the, the, that city in that vehicle, that way that vehicle's covered underneath that city's, uh, liability insurance and all that.
And it's more representative city that one.
I mean, because if we, we furnish the truck, that, that truck's tied to the city of Bartlett, he runs the stoplight in Holland and hits another car, he burns somebody, injures somebody.
Yeah, that gets ugly quick.
And that gets real ugly, real fast, you know, and that's, I don't know, it's the city of Bartlett truck, what's a guy from Thrall doing driving it or whatever, you know, and, and Holland or wherever, you know, and it's, so got a lot of things to figure out there, but.
Yeah.
I can see it working though.
I think it's a good idea, making it work.
A little cost sharing, I mean, have cities helping each other.
They should, I think, that's what should be happening with all these small cities, try to co-op some of that stuff.
Sounds good, yeah, if you can get me your questions as you think of them, that way I can start following them, and I'll reach out, probably late this week, with Little, Little River and Rogers to just say, hey, you know, where are y'all at right now? What are, where are the other cities, and we can start working through, trying to get some kind of meeting together with the mayor and the, and the management of these cities so that we can get.
I assume it's to take our officers out of that completely, where they can continue their other businesses.
That, that's the goal.
That'd be the goal, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if, I don't know if you're still one of them involved in it somehow, I don't know.
What, what they could do is if they see anything, they could report it, and we can create word orders, and essentially whenever the code, the code officer comes into town, we could say, hey, here's the ones that we've noticed, can you go out there and then let us know what you're seeing, what ordinance they're violating and whatnot? That way, the chief isn't necessarily having to do that work. Um, they can just say, I think there's code violations here, maybe an adder still look at, and that way we've got a, a running list when they get here, and that way they can target and then save them some time and be a little bit more efficient.
Cool, I think we've got something to take back.
Alrighty.
Thank y'all. Did you need something, Jennifer? No, yes, okay, I just, thank you. Uh, consent agenda, um, item number three, consideration and possible action to renew agreement with PHI carriers' memberships for the city residents for an amount not to exceed four thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, that's PHI, the air, air medical helicopter, we went in agreement with them last year, uh, about this time last year. Cover everybody and every citizen, every household in the city of Bartlett, if they need to be air-vacked out, and we just want to see about renewing the annual contract. As far as I know, I don't think we've had to use it inside the city, I know they've used it in county some, but I don't know if they were for like citizens of Bartlett, if they were covered by our membership, so. One air, air flight costs twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars, and so if, I think, they build insurance first, whatever insurance doesn't pay, they take care of it a hundred percent. They're, you're on the council whenever we did this last year, weren't you, for you? Every little lady, uh. What was her name?
Yeah, I think it's. It's per. It's for, I guess it's for physical addresses, and I mean, since then we have added more homes.
I thought it was around the forty-five hundred to five thousand dollar range last year, I thought.
So this is for seven hundred membership cards, and then there's a certain amount that's attached to each card.
Because we had them add, like, uh, all of our city employees to the, to the roster, um, because like, like Mara, she lives in Gerald, we still want her covered, Brenda lives in Holland, sorry, give me else, press information out by bed, but, uh, we've got other, other employees that do not live, reside in the city. So, um, we just want to make sure that our city employees are covered as well, if they're here at work or on their way to work and they were to get injured, we want them taken care of. And it, it covers our citizens and, and everybody on the roster, registered for anywhere, if they're in an accident or injured anywhere, they have to be air-vacked out, anywhere in Williamson or Bell County, so if they're in Holland or Belton, Temple, wherever, wherever it stops, you know, or even Georgetown or North Austin or Round Rock.
Does it need to be recommunicated to the city, I mean, the citizens, does it have what the process is?
We certainly can, I know that we did a, a good effort whenever, um, people were getting utility bills or things of that nature to just make sure that people have cards, and we can certainly push that again if this is something the council want, wish to renew.
There's a stack of cards out in front of the payment window right now, and then, uh, I know we did a, a media, uh.
Push out, yeah, press release.
Boom, that thing, press release, whenever we signed it last time, went to Facebook with it, it's on the, it's on the city website, I believe, and I think it is even in the newspaper, so.
Get that a shot out of mine, we probably didn't re-remind them a couple of times a year.
We can work on, uh, attaching something to the utility bill, we've seen a lot of success with that, we do have to pay for that, but it's, it's a force multiplier.
We even set up, what was that, the fire, fire department fundraiser?
Yeah, in Granger.
Well, in Granger, we set up that table and had all the cards here in people, and if you're not a citizen, like, if you don't live in Bartlett, and you still want to register, they, they even got like household, um, where you can register your household for like thirty dollars a month or thirty dollars a year, it's honestly silly cheap, but compared to what the price of an air.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I know we didn't have this at the time, but remember when Laurel was in that wreck? Just the first bridge going into town? I think she had to be airlifted to Scott and Wild.
There was another one not too long ago, out towards the villa, I've seen that PHI fly over a few times during the last couple of weeks, so I don't know where they're landing, but. We've got a lot of accidents this.
On ninety-five.
Ninety-five and.
It is.
So, that's just it, I mean, you guys, it's four thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, or not exceed, four thousand four fifty-two. You want to do this? It's just, that's part of the consent agenda, but it is an action item, but.
It's fine.
It is an action item.
Yeah.
Consent agenda, so. Y'all's choice.
As we consider the action on, uh, to renew the PHI carrier's membership for the city, residence for amount up to two forty-four fifty-two dollars.
Mr. Weaver's got a motion, Ms. Cooper has a second. All in favor? That does carry four to zero. I'll sign this before it's over. All right, item number four, regular agenda, review, discuss and considerate action, consideration and possible action to accept an expedited sub-recipient agreement for a grant from TDM, Texas Department of Emergency Management, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the installation of two generators at the wastewater treatment plant and EV lift station.
So, mayor and council, this was something that I, I believe was applied to in twenty-three or twenty-two. Um, we finally heard back from FEMA, and they've, uh, provided it to TDM, who's been, now provided it to us, that they have awarded us the, um, funding essentially for the, with the generators for the two lift stations. So one at the wastewater plant and one at the EV street lift station. As you all know, I think this is something that's going to be required, I don't know when that date is effective, but it was out of SV one two legislative sessions ago, so this is going to be something that brings us into compliance with having that backup generation at critical facilities, and so this is, and we'd only have to pay, um, twenty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which is a steal for these two generators. There is another application for, at the fire station, and was there, what was it, City Hall and PD?
PD Fire Station.
No, we had the, I know we had the lift stations on one, and I think we had PD, we had emergency operations on the second one, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And that one's still pending.
Yeah, those are still pending.
It's not closed, they just, they, yeah. So we could be committing that, that, that one, this one, for some reason moved through rather quickly, I guess. But like you said, the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar project, the city's on the hook for ten percent, so twenty-six thousand dollars for.
You have any money?
Yes.
This is for two, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so this should be the EV street lift station, the one down behind Dollar General, and then I think the.
The one essentially where the inflow comes in.
Yeah, where the three pumps are that always have issues with.
Now, on EV, does that include the pad and everything for it to sit on, is it a turnkey thing, or do we have to provide all?
I believe they're turnkey.
I believe it's turnkey.
Electrical hookups and all of this, all.
Yeah, install two permanently mounted emergency generators with the transfer switches, electrical system upgrades.
And is it a propane or diesel or?
Uh, that's a good question.
I believe that'll probably be up to us. I don't know if they get into the weeds there.
I'm sure that's probably all part of the, uh, once we accept it, they come out and do their quotes, you know, for the hookups and all that.
Is there one that's preferred? So diesel's preferred?
Not farm diesel, but if you get the permit, it's a lot cheaper while we're running our trucks.
Yeah.
The only thing with diesel, you have to make sure that you keep the tanks stocked up with a condensator and bad, and they're going to have water issues. So that you can maintain it, I think that happens with the diesel.
Yeah.
Propane, you don't have to do that.
I know our propane gets stocked up.
Well, once we get those two in, we've already got one there, and we've got another one out at the sewer plant, and we've got one at the water plant. Uh, the other ones were the water wells.
That's right.
Water wells and fire station.
There was one at each well.
Yeah, one at each well and the fire station, and so we've already got three in town right now that we own, and then if we add these two, that's five, and then if we add those other ones, that's gonna be eight, we're just going to have to get like a, a generator maintenance program, you know, and, and let them quarterly maintenance.
Have a contract.
Contracts, yeah. So. Yeah, check batteries, all that stuff.
The required signage too, that's a big one too.
Propane, are they current using, or they just kind of periodically watch them on the top of them all, or do they really call them?
As often as our guys call them. I think it's as often as our guys call them.
I'd have to check, I know Steven's been pretty on top of it, um, but I'll have to check to see if that's an, if that's a contract where they come and check, if there's some kind of sensor of some sort or what that looks like, and I can get back to you all on that.
The building's hard, propane?
Two of them.
Two of them, or the sewer plant?
Sewer plant and the water well. Diesel process. I don't know, I don't do it. That one doesn't smoke anymore, does it?
Sorry?
That one doesn't smoke anymore, does it? We had a.
We had all that, the diesel got water in it, and it basically fermented, and that's why it smokes so bad.
That's that condense, condensation you're talking about?
Every time that thing would come on, I, the lady where, where Miss Lori lives, the lady that, Lori bought that house and that lady that lived there, she'd call me every time that thing come on, that big green thing's on fire! It's like, it's not on fire, but I, I'll drive by and check it out, just to make sure. So, that's it? I'm gonna miss you, Philip. I'm gonna miss you, Phillip.
I want to make a motion to execute the sub-recipient agreement for the grant of TVE, a hazard mitigation grant program for the installation of two generators at the wastewater treatment plant and EV lift station.
Thanks, Mr. Weaver. Thank you, Sheldon. All in favor? Carry four zero. Maybe they call you every now and then just to make a motion. Alright, at this time, council resides in the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-zero-one. City council will recess into executive session to discuss the following, item number five, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four personnel matters, to deliberate the evaluation of the city administrator. So, we will go into executive session at six-thirty-one PM. Y'all have y'alls.
Anyone needs any, I can have some in my office.
You have some in your office?
Yeah.
Couple.
Are we going there?
Start.
Are we going to the?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to get the AP's feet. That one in the hallway blows hot air.
Oh no.
These two here, they blow, this one does cool. That one blows cool, but it's so loud you can hear, so they cut it off. This one was blowing hot air earlier, so.
Is that building falling down? Is that why it's all burnt off? Because I didn't notice the backside of it looking like that.
The last time it rained, last week or the last two weeks ago, it fell in when we were in this meeting.
While you were in the meeting?
Yes.
That must have been scary sounding.
Yeah, we saw it, I mean.
It's sad, isn't that one of the oldest buildings in town? Oh wow.
Yeah. Yeah.
And somebody was occupying it, wasn't it? Somebody in it?
No, I don't think so.
No?
We have a gentleman that owns it, but nothing's going on in there.
Oh, okay.
It's been cracked for a long time.
Yeah.
And then, when it rained, all that rain pushed it down there and.
Do you know the city just got the new fiber?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the city just got the new fiber installed?
Yes, Heritage Card Man.
Did you like it? Did you guys, did they do a good job installing?
Well, so far.
I'm gonna deliberate first. Is that a good time or a bad time? I'm definitely considering having it added to my house now that I'll be working from home, probably in another month, so.
Is it working for you?
Well, I have just the wifi through, I think it's voucher. And it's not horrid, Bill, but I'm worried that every single time, you know, there's a storm, because that seems to be operated out of, of the satellite, every time it rains, nothing. And I can't be like that with work.
We have Heritage. We switched to that and it's been a life changer.
Has it? That's what I want to go to.
It's been way more reliable. I don't think we've had any outages recently.
It's good.
Yeah. Our phone lines, that's something else. We can hear the rain in the line sometimes.
Really?
It just gets very, there's like a background noise. Yeah.
I'm gonna call them up probably this week and, I should have it scheduled. Coming forward into the high-speed internet.
I was glad it's here. It's taken some cities a while for them to really be interested to expand. When I was in Georgetown, they only had one provider, and that was up to two years ago. It was Southern Link. Then they renamed themselves, and people thought there was a monopoly, but it's because no one else wanted to build. And then, all of a sudden, that state money, then it came from the federal down to the states. And after that flood of money came out, everybody wanted to build in all these rural areas, because now they were getting funded for it.
I know fibers were really expensive.
Six thirty-seven. Yeah.
Because my ex worked for, it was Time Warner, a minute that was bought out and changed hands, but he was with the company. Every time somebody cut one of those fibers, the employees got really big in trouble. Because it was like, you screwed up and you cost the company a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah, especially when it's underground, it gets hit a lot. Here, it's run above ground.
That's what I learned when I asked about it. So I was like, where is it? Because I haven't seen any.
Any trenching, yeah. No, they, they luckily did it above ground. I've gone through underground ones and it's not fun. They hit water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, they hit everything in between, and then you're lucky if they call you. Um, Gerald, they hit a twenty-four inch sewer line? They didn't call anybody. I don't even think that was, I think that was Atmos that hit it. They didn't call anybody about it. The city had to figure it out.
Oh no.
Yeah.
That should be a crime.
You'd be surprised how much that, that happens. Where they hit things and they don't tell anybody, because essentially, they're liable.
I can see a resident doing it and not telling anybody, but I just can't imagine a company being so irresponsible that they just don't.
Well, and there's, there's consequences at the PUC level you can find, they get fined and whatnot, but that's if, that's if anybody reports it. So, you just never know. But that's why, like, the first thing that our guys have to do is call eight-one-one, get locates out here. Because if you're, if you don't do that step, that's, that's where they get you. I know the school district, y'all hit a gas line, that one was fun.
Didn't even know it was there. We even call it one one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and those are the big ones too, I heard.
Real fun.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh man.
I've sat in a meet, a meeting, maybe three or four weeks ago, and Exxon presented. And you'd be surprised how much pipe is underground that just carries, like, gas lines. It's just an insane amount. And they're building more pipelines.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, one going through our property.
Really? Yeah. They transport all kinds of, I mean, it's not just natural gas, there's a, there's a bunch of other stuff that they can run through there.
So, Heather, Heather, do you want to make a meeting, a new meeting? You and Jan on Wednesday?
Yeah, I haven't heard back from them just yet, but it's, I said, give me a few dates and times that y'all want to meet on a regular basis.
I think while we're beginning.
Yeah. You said, is there a cer- certain time on Wednesday?
One, one-thirty?
I can make one work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to send them by, or you'll send it?
Uh, if y'all can send it, because y'all have more people on y'all's end.
Okay.
I just don't know all the parties, that way they can be on there. And it'll just be city staff, because I don't want to pass on any costs of ATS and anything like that. But as y'all have questions, just let us know and we can reach out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll send it on.
Yeah. Yeah, I called him, I think it was last week, and he was at a superintendent's conference.
Oh my God, you've been at. So much for my own girl, so much.
I can imagine.
And then end of the year, getting ready for graduation.